I'd like to discuss a couple of personnel matters, the clerk's office and recreation department.
Make motion to adjourn session for those two items.
Seconded.
For discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Of course, say no. We have an amended agenda, we have an energy plan to look at and a homestead abatement. I move we go into, we accept the amended agenda, amended agenda as listed.
Present.
I'll second that.
For discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Of course, say no. Subboard meeting minutes of September 2, 2020, the additions, changes, corrections. Any question on the orders?
I see there's a $1,232, it looks like ammunition purchased for the police department. I can't say that I've ever seen such a ammo bill at one time. What's the purpose of this?
I don't know that it's how it stands up with other purchases, but I know that there is a budget for ammunition and this was the cycle to do it so that they could do their rifle range training a few days ago. Took like a day and a half at the rifle range for all the various officers to come in and do their proficiency testing. But I can, I can look at the previous numbers if you like and see if there's anything.
Well, the one thing I can tell you, ammo is expensive right now because it's pretty much nonexistent, so the prices have gone significantly.
Or actually speculation, that kind of thing?
Oh, boy.
Well, it's just, yeah, it's just with what's going on.
Another thing that got, kind of got my attention, one of the fire trucks, oil change, $771, it must be more than just an oil change or...
What is, that's when they go through the whole thing?
Change oil in big diesel engines in your home, $700 for a filter and oil.
Their total service, they go right to the whole truck. This is our annual, every, every June they go through it towards the end of fall is. I'm not sure that's what it was.
Joe, do you want to tell me what line item we're looking at? What, who's the vendor?
0490.
490?
It's probably central lot.
Yeah. Type, I can find something.
Yeah, central lot, truck, right there. Just seemed like, just for an oil change.
Yeah, there's usually more to the story. Yeah. We've got oil filter, fuel filter, fuel filter, oil, lamp, valve, three-way, mail connector, 90 push lock, and this is a service station inspection as well.
Yeah, I see that. That makes a big difference.
Lots of little things add up.
Yeah.
Any questions on your orders?
Tonight's was just a little larger than the supplemental usually is because we have three weeks before our next meeting, so we loaded them up a little. We all set? I'm sorry, the doctor started her paperwork. I'll get down in a second.
Who would it be?
Having a hard time getting a call out.
You don't have to dial 802 for them.
I know, but then I did for the third time just to check it. All right, we'll get them later. We'll probably call them. I'm sorry? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In terms of coronavirus update, the town has taken delivery of our Zoom-friendly equipment and deployed it in the town office conference room. The setup should enable boards and commissions to meet in person and virtually with guests and members of the public who cannot be present due to social distancing protocols or for other reasons, just convenience. Training for use of this equipment will be provided by Vermont Digital and is set to take place here tomorrow morning at nine o'clock here in the conference room. The town, as you know, has applied for grant funds to reimburse it for the cost of the equipment, plus all of our other COVID-19 expenses. We just received a note today saying we should hear any day as to the success of that grant, but that most towns will be seeing most or all of their grant requests granted. Helen McKinley reports that the town's land records digitization grant was successful and we got word on that, I think, today. There might be something in your packet, I think, to confirm that. In the requested amount of $19,650, again, to bring up more land records into our electronic COTS review system, which I think takes our land records further back in time, which is the whole idea, to facilitate remote land record searches, that kind of thing. The town plans to sign a contract with Casella for the Depot Hill Sewer Pump Station project soon, with work anticipated to begin right after Thanksgiving. Audit, last week, the town underwent its annual external audit administered by the firm of Sullivan and Powers. Preliminary feedback, and this is just preliminary, suggests that we experienced a healthy surplus in the general fund on the order of $48,000, $50,000, and a modest deficit in the highway fund approximating about $14,000 or $15,000. Stay tuned, of course, for more details when we have more of the audit and it's finalized over the next few months. Veterans Day, based on the select board's go-ahead at the last meeting, I've begun to reach out and talk to others about putting a program together for what will be an all-outdoor event this year. Thus far, I've secured the participation of a keynote speaker and a clergyman. Initial feedback from Jeff Carrera with the Scouts is also favorable. And I've got an inquiry into the school music department, and of course, as you know, they're dealing with lots of stuff and they'll probably touch base with me closer to the event in mid-October or so, let me know what might be feasible for music. Robin Rowe has suggested that she's planning to resign or retire as director of the Pittsburgh Food Shelf. She's been working at this for more than 20 years, spend more time with family now. She's looking for a replacement. Anyone who's interested in learning more or with a tip as to who would be a good candidate to replace her should get in touch with Robin Rowe about that. A copy of our email is included in your packets tonight. Finally, the truck route will be closed for an additional weekend this coming Saturday and Sunday, so they can install the concrete panels at the improved railroad crossing on the truck route. Thereafter, there'll be some paving on the transition points of both sides of the railroad crossing, which will involve just limiting traffic to a single lane for a short period of time, we hope. You can see an email thread between me and the state about Greg Markowski's suggestion that the town offer some resources toward extending any paved transition. Basically, the state says they know the need for a smooth transition, they're planning for a smooth transition in their own project, and that if we were to get involved, it'd be very expensive and unnecessary. So, we told them, we'll see how the project turns out, we can always revisit this at another time if we want to put any money into what they've done, but to collaborate does not seem like a good idea at the time, especially since we've already agreed that we didn't want to spend a penny more than our paved budget. So, that's all I've got. Any comments or questions or donations or report?
I just had one thing, I was in here first thing this morning and Helen told me about that grant to digitize the records. She was pretty excited.
Yeah.
And it, from what she told me, it appears people now, once this is done, be able to title search back 40 years. And it basically takes us back pretty close, or if not to the point where stuff was being handwritten. So, it gets a lot of our records.
And 40 years is key if we can hit that because that's what a title policy is based on.
Right, yeah.
So, if you're going to do a title search to sell a home, that's really all you need.
Yeah.
So, that would be great if it goes that far back.
That's, she seemed to believe that it was going to get us back there, so I just wanted to let people know that.
Anything else? Any select board members? Remarks evening?
Yes, I do. Got a phone call a couple of days ago from an irate landowner.
How bad I know who?
Oh, you, I'm sure you know who. And it was due to some ditching along his property, the stone line ditches and whatever. I've talked to Chad, I asked Chad, did you talk to this person ahead of time just to let him know what you were going to be doing, to which Chad said, well, no, I didn't. And I'm not saying we need a written policy, but maybe going forward, just having the road foreman talk to the person and explain what it is we're doing and why we're doing it might, might be a good thing to do.
If I could respond, this gentleman was well aware of our plans last fall because we were talking to him about that last fall. Chad, I think, had some interaction with him in the fall, I know I did. We explained it, he seemed, I won't say satisfied, but he seemed to understand that we can't let people veto roadside projects to maintain our roads. This latest round was kicked off when we were actually doing the work and that kind of stirred up the hornet's nest. I had more conversations with him, and again, I don't think I was successful to kind of make him any happier with the project, but I did my best to explain that a lot of it comes from the feds who are leaning on the state to clean up the lake, and that part of this is storm water management to make sure that sediment from storms doesn't make its way into local water bodies and then eventually into the lake. He felt adamant that because of the layout of his land, no storm water was going to make its way into the brook, let alone the lake. Nevertheless, I did follow up with Devin at the Regional Planning Commission to confirm that what we're doing seemed to be appropriate based on his understanding of what the state wants for road maintenance. He said, he actually visited the site and said we were doing a bang-out job. I also talked with somebody from the state named Jim Ryan, who's kind of overseeing a lot of these grants designed toward getting towns to take these best management practices and put them in place, and he basically confirmed that we're taking the right approach. And it's not willy-nilly. We have the road inventory, which lists all of the hydrologically connected segments. This has been identified, so it's been on our work list. And again, bottom line, I'm very sorry, and I told this person that I was very sorry that he doesn't like the project, but that we're going to go forward with it, and I think it's close to being concluded. And I'd be happy to talk about it further when you can.
Well, no, I, but I just, maybe, and Chad did say he talked to him last fall, but maybe the day bef, you know, week before or whatever, just saying, hey, remember what we told you, blah, blah, blah.
I agree, that's always a good policy.
You know, is it going to solve the problem, but it might de-escalate it a little bit.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Just a suggestion.
I appreciate, it's a good idea, always a good idea to knock on doors.
Communication is key.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other remarks? I'm assuming we don't have any public comment this evening, there's no public. So, we'll switch things around and we'll take the Pittsburgh Village Farm next.
Great, thank you. Thanks. So, I'm Lori Byram, I think I know everyone now, been here a few times. This is Gisela Keller, and you know Louis Godreau, I think, and you probably know Gisela as well. So, we are, the first thing I want to say is we're not here to ask for any town money, nor will we ever be, we hope, in a position to ask for town money. But what we are in the, in the business of is trying to get the three wishes that the townspeople expressed in those March meetings a couple of years ago. A community center out of a building that's in the center of town, a possibility of some retail space, and an agricultural hub of some kind. So, the board of the Pittsburgh Village Farm on which Louis and I sit decided we needed to make a strategic plan to help us fast-forward into meeting those goals. We did that this summer, Gisela was our facilitator. And the reason we're coming tonight, and thank you very much for giving us the time, is to let you know that I think any of you know that that building is going to need serious renovation, a reconstruction in some parts of it. In order to cover the cost of that, we are in the business of getting grant money. There are some significant grant dollars out there right now for things like community centers because people haven't been able to gather and the state recognizes that that would be important. So, many of the larger grants that we need require indication in some fashion of the town's full support of going forward to get the building renovated and get the grant money. So, what you might be in a position of helping us would be to sign off on these grants that we would be writing that just indicates to the grantors that we have the town's support in going forward to get this building up and running. So, with that background, Gisela's going to walk you through some of the strategic plan, and then Louis and I and Gisela will be happy to answer any of your questions, but that's the background.
Perfect. So, yeah, I wish your, your TV system would be, because we have a very beautiful plan with lots of pictures, and the most beautiful picture is the one with the panel discussion at the strategic plan workshop where David Mills kindly joined us and gave us actually some feedback, which is now included in the strategic plan. So, we would love to send this to you via email or come back and give you the really nice, beautiful, but I guess...
Is it on your website? Because we do have a link to your website in our latest newsletter.
Not yet, but we want to post it actually next week and maybe to, you know, to also wanted to wait for this meeting and see whether you, you know, have any feedback, suggestions, and thank you so much again. So, as Lori said, the, you know, we wanted to ground the strategic plan on a community gathering, plus the three priorities made in 2018 at the town hall meetings, a community gathering place, an agricultural hub, and a commercial retail space. And so, we wanted to fill these priorities with life. And just some quick facts about Pittsburgh Village Farm, it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization governed by a board and two members are here. We, we are focusing on Pittsburgh, but also on Proctor, Brandon, and Chittenden down the road, but first of all, we want to get focused on Pittsburgh. We have like 50 volunteers and hours and hours and 500, you know, who spend 500 hours. A number of programs which you may hopefully have seen, like a community garden, flea market, children's outdoor play, and so this is who we are. And through the strategic planning process and also through that panel discussion, we arrived at some key lessons learned. And one is, we must better understand community needs, expectations, and likes overall, and I think David said, you know, some people think you're just, you're, but you know, you have never reached out and you're a bit elitist, and we thought, oops, yeah, we need to, we need to change that. So, that was an important lesson learned. We must bridge the gap and bring the perspective of young people, also the technology gap. We must become much more active with Facebook and Twitter. I mean, we'll need staff eventually. And we, and one of the lessons learned is stronger relationship with Pittsburgh town. So, this is why, one of the reasons why we're here. And the early childhood education will be a center, will be a first big priority, which is also aligned with statewide needs. Here's a list of our strategic partners, I will not go through that, but you are, you are among our strategic partners, of course. We defined our mission and values, like inclusiveness, diversity, serve and create community, contribute to the well-being of our community, involve all community voices, and build on the work of others, collaborate and cooperate, do not compete. And then we arrived at these strategic goals, and number one, restore the historic farmhouse. As Lori said, that's going to be our number one priority. Strengthen the board and management. We now, we are, we are now talking a lot about to grow the board from currently eight to 12 members to, to come up with a fundraising plan and implement it to come, we found somebody who's doing now Facebook and Twitter and, and, and marketing for us and really strengthen the operation. Then number C, develop the early childhood education and boost small business and retail. D, create a vibrant community center, and E, the agricultural hub. And this is not a prioritization, it's just more or less the sequence of how we're going to attack these priorities. And then I thought, you know, for you, since you're always monitoring budget, it would be nice to ask, so how do they make this work? So, we have an income scenario, and you'll see sort of 50% childcare, 13% events, retail, flex office space, donations and grants. And then on the expenses side, also events, staff, reserve, maintenance, property tax, utilities. And I would like to, then we defined all the objectives and of all these priorities, of these strategic goals, but I would like to stop here because we would really love to hear from you and love to answer any questions you might have and then can kind of dig deeper. Is that okay?
Go on. Any questions?
I would like to make a comment, I think it's, this is a great idea. I've had limited involvement over the years, but I have, I can favor town collaborating in some way, and this appears to be the best way to do it.
No, and I would, I would agree, I mean, it's, like I told you, you know, it's, it's a great idea, but the townspeople don't want to have to pay for it, and that's, you know, that's the bottom line. That's the bottom line, and, but I have no objections whatsoever to us supporting what you're doing, because I think it's, it's a great thing, I mean, in, in, from a simplistic perspective, the better you make that house, the more property taxes you get. So, I mean, just from an economic, you know, so to, you know, the more you do there, the more it benefits the town, not only socially, but also financially.
I think it's important for everyone to know that we, we have been successful, a little unprofessional group of grant writers, myself and Gisela and Louis' wife Nancy and Donna Wilson, we have gotten money to support the Toons Day, which we then had to cancel, but the concerts we had last year. We just got a grant, a successful grant to pay for a grant writer who will research where the big money is, because that house, as you might guess, is going to need $500,000, not little bits of $3,000 nibbles, you know? And so, this person will come on board and will work with us to get that big money. And then we, we really hope some of these grants allow for things like $10,000 to go to the fire department, because the volunteer fire department will take on some responsibility once it's a community center. So, I really think there's no downside to this and no financial hit that we can see. And I, I'm hoping that people, that the four of you might feel, this sounds like you're favorably disposed to signing off on some of these grants that require a select board sign-off, which is really where we are. Louis, you want to do?
Let's see, another really good partner for us, on a different topic, is Eric Mallett at Paramount. So, we were going to have the Vermont Symphony Orchestra on the property, that fell through, I mean, they got canceled for the season, but we have gone through the Zoring administration, we have permission for sixth concert. The southwestern part of that property is the natural amphitheater. It replicates pretty much what was available at Mountaintop Inn when they had the concert there, so it's moving from the Mountaintop to Pittsburgh. And so, we can do that turn, that concert plus five more. So, that's a really, a big draw, it could be 1,000 people coming to a concert, but it adds a little bit more recognition for the town, and that's a really a good benefit for the town. So, there's a, there's some, there's some good relationships we're building, and go ahead, David.
No, I just, no, that's good. The other thing, as you said that, and I've noticed Brandon's got one.
The drive-in?
The drive-in, and, and again, like I said before, your, your concerts are catering to this part of town.
Right.
Have something else, so maybe if you've got that area, maybe once a month you have a, whether it's a drive-in or a sit, whatever, sit-in, you have a movie.
I think, yeah.
You know, something for those who, of us who aren't necessarily going to go to a concert.
I thought your remarks were very helpful that day, and, you know, I think we already have started to think about what kinds of other events might draw people. And one of the neat things is that Eric Mallett is an old Pittsburgh boy, you know? So, he has a lot, did you know that?
Young, I think, young Pittsburgh boy.
Yeah.
I thought he looked young.
I think so. He was a, he's an Otter Valley student and, you know, knows a lot about Pittsburgh. So, when we met with the zoning board folks, he came along, and I, it's, it's easy to see that he understands the town, he, he also understands the diversity that we're hoping for in terms of the kinds of events that you are pushing us towards. And I think you were really heard, and it was so nice that you managed time to come up and, and help us see that, so.
Yeah, I'd say, as a counterpoint to the concerts, maybe classical music, Touch a Truck was a good way to have a broad...
Well, the Toons Day thing was family-based and folk singers and, you know, could be a rock band, remember when we were talking about it?
Yeah, yeah.
To get some of the people that like that sort of music out.
Yeah, so once we are beyond COVID and we're doing more events, we also really like to capture your ideas and your knowledge and your expertise, and also not only here, but also really do, be more strategic in our outreach and, and really reach out to the town and, and hear people say, so what, what bubble people like and what do people need, and, you know, is it yoga classes, is it, is it, you know, what is it? So, we really want to get a really good sense of what's, what, how we can serve the community.
I, I don't know if any of you had heard about the, the Early Childhood Center, but we already had almost $60,000 from Let's Grow Kids in order to help meet the state downturn, the number of spots for kids when parents are working. They're, they're poised to give us the money back again, but we had to cancel it when we realized that the infrastructure for the house wouldn't allow for the kind of health and safety regulations that we need. But we think that's going to bring parents in who are going to drop off their kids, not park all over the place, but maybe get a cup of coffee at Kamuta's and, you know, maybe go next door and, and do something with Keith's, you know? Who knows what it will be, but to bring in a few more people that are going to drop off kids and create a few jobs for Pittsburgh graduates, all of that is very exciting to us, as, even as it meets a need that we have for more spots for childcare. Great, well, when we get that big old grant written, we'll call up John and come back and see you.
Come back and see you. Yeah, I'm sure we'll probably sign them.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We have an architect that's working on it now, we'll be meeting with him, that's probably our meeting tomorrow night, so we're making progress on the layout of the building, on the layout of the site. It's slow, it's been slow progress, but it's still moving forward.
It's the kind of thing, people, volunteers have moved aboard here, taken down a wall here and there, and all of a sudden, what you see underneath is worse than what you started with.
Uh, I'm sure, yeah.
Some people are in that business. Some people are in that business, know how that goes. So, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Take good care. We'll see you again. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Back to your business.
You've heard around dates, you've done your COVID.
I think we've already had that discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Don't beat on our referees, director.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I put a memo in your packet and I'll explain it a little bit again so we can talk to the folks at home. The town has hired a new recreation director with a start date of Monday, December 14th. He is Nelson Brown, a Waitsfield native, 28 years of age, with a BS in Recreation Management and a minor in Business Administration. His work background is in recreation, having served as the Assistant Recreation Director in the resort town of Waterville Valley, New Hampshire for several years, as his attached resume and cover letter notes. As we discussed, we wanted to start him relatively down the road because programming is not too busy with COVID restrictions. And we thought maybe December or January would be a good time to start him. He'll maybe have some opportunity early on to look at economic development. And he certainly has expressed an interest and willingness to do that. And of course, his minor in Business Administration, no doubt will be helpful on that. As I noted originally, the town received 12 applicants from, from strong applicants, applications from strong applicants for the job. We reviewed those in, by way of a committee that we set up for the purpose of recruiting our next recreation director. And that committee consisted of myself, Randy Adams, who was gracious enough to participate, and three members of the Recreation Committee who volunteered to serve. Those were Rob Ketchum, Kelly Conotan, and Monica Keith. We also had the participation and support of Bill Moore, who's the Recreation Director over in Brandon, who again does both recreation and economic development. So we appreciated everybody's thorough work through several sessions at which we scrutinized applications, resumes. Ultimately, we checked on references and were very pleased with the references for our three finalists, and particularly those for Nelson. Pretty much everybody he seems to have worked for and with gave glowing recommendations for him, both as a person and for his varied skillset. So we're excited to have him aboard. The, again, the plan is to have him come down, he couldn't make it tonight, but to come down to an October 7th Select Board meeting. He will meet with the members of the board, get introduced. He'll also meet with the rest of the Rec Committee members, and he'll have a chance to meet with staff beforehand. And of course, we're going to take advantage of this little gap to gather information for him about the Recreation Department and what our programming over the years has looked like. And we're also gathering information from people like the newly merged Regional Chamber of Commerce and, and Economic Development Corporation in the Rutland Region through Lyle Jepson. We hope to help him create kind of mentorships so he can learn what those folks and Bill Moore might be doing on economic development. So I guess I'm just very excited to announce this hiring and look forward to getting him on board and getting him productive in both his pursuits, primarily recreation, but to the extent he can do it, economic development as well.
Abe, go ahead.
Now, will he still be living in Waitsfield and commuting back and forth?
He has a lease until June, but he has said he'd look into moving at that point when the lease is up. Meanwhile, when I see him in October, I'm going to hand him some research I found through my legal background about how one might break a lease or renegotiate it. Because I'm not opposed to him coming down sooner if that's possible.
Right.
That's a lot of commute.
It is.
It is, especially in the winter.
Yeah.
All right. Good. I hope we're headed in the right direction. Options for the village sidewalk?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't have much new to report other than what I told Selectman Mills the other day. I spoke with Tim Rice at WLP, and he reports that if we were to try, and I haven't yet run this by the state, if we were to try to convert our plan for a concrete curb to asphalt, that we might be looking to save $8,000 to $10,000. It's not a big savings. So I think the question for the board is, would you like to rebid the thing with more flexibility on timing, or simply politely decline the state's offer of the grant money that's been offered?
Say we politely decline.
I think, I agree. That's a lot of money.
It's for something that's going to be torn out. I mean, it's.
It all sounded good.
It's, it's, it's a safety issue. I mean, we all get that, but there's the monetary side of it, too.
And I do feel the state's been quite patient, waiting for us to sort it out. So if we could give them, if we could give them a final response, that'd probably be well received.
I think we should, just sort of respectfully decline it.
But if there's any, and I guess, yeah, if we respectfully, that part I agree with, going back to some of the stuff Joe has said over the years at this point, you know, if there's a way we could just paint someone, do something, even those reflective markers or something to differentiate between the sidewalk and the road.
Right.
Because that's the different, the differentiation is the big thing.
Right. Maybe a reflective strike that was down there. They're putting these bicycle lanes. Did you notice that one over on Route 4?
Yeah.
It's not this wide. It's, it's taped.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's not paint. It's taped. They groove it in. That's something.
Just something so people know that's, that is the road.
The road is, you know.
Yeah.
If this is a big problem down there from a safety standpoint, I've never heard Mike Warfel mention it. I have never heard Mike say, well, he has spent time there, and he's never really given us a big push to do what we've talked about doing.
Well, I think there's been a lot of anecdotes from people who've seen people passing on the right-hand side.
And I've had a couple of people tell me that they are on the sidewalk and somebody pulls out the pass and almost hits them. I mean, we've been fortunate.
I can see that happening. And I probably, I witnessed a state trooper having a car stopped on the sidewalk here back not too long ago.
Yeah, what, what sidewalk?
Well, that's, that's the problem. You can't, you can't tell it's a sidewalk.
Well, what would be wrong with asking Mike to donate, or not donate, but schedule some time there to see how bad that is? Have somebody park there.
If we had something like that, in terms of data, that might help us argue to V-Trans for the need for some improvements.
Right. We've never done that, have we?
I don't think in a, in a concerted way, no.
I don't think that Mike has ever come to us and said, look, I spent 10 hours there, over 24 hours there. We spent more time checking up on a dog that was across from the mobile station. We had Mike sit at the mobile station all one night to listen.
Was it tape recorder, recording nothing, as I understand it?
That's right.
Now, along those lines, you're talking, whoop, does Rutland Regional Planning Commission have anything that can monitor that kind of stuff? Rather than taking time from our police force.
That would be a first question.
We're, we're paying them to do stuff for us anyway. We might as well.
They're good at traffic studies and measuring speeds. I don't know about this and that, but I'll ask them.
It's worth, it's worth asking the question.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think that that area down there is even signed the way it could be and maybe should be.
Well, uh, no.
Has anybody ever looked at it from that standpoint to see if there was signage is good, could be better? I haven't heard about it.
I don't recall it, but I know we've had unsuccessful conversations with V-Trans about recommended signage in the past. They've taken a very much, it's our road standpoint. But we can certainly ask.
Yeah.
I know the state has to approve anything you do. They might not have to approve law enforcement officers sitting there and somebody here and watching it. I'm not sure about that.
But I think we've got four things we could do as our, as our cheap alternative. Line striping suggestion, signage, police observation, but better yet, Regional Planning Commission data collection.
Yeah. I mean, if all else fails, then I'm, well, I'm going to say this because I'm just me. We got a whole lot of guardrail posts down at the dump, and every four feet drive one of them in on the edge of our sidewalk and in the middle of the night, and then we've, problem solved.
Sidewalk.
I'm afraid the state will. Well, yeah, it'll take them at least a week or two to get them out.
We'll have to look at the future because we've already spent a lot of money on Route 718 for the construction.
Oh, yeah.
We don't want to piss the state out now.
I know, I know.
We're talking three to $5 million.
I'm joking, but.
Yeah.
And I think, especially given COVID and the focus on trying to keep our books on a good, solid basis for taxpayers, they'll understand us backing out of the project.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money right now.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yep.
All right. Update on the sand shed project?
Uh, yes. There'll be a pre-construction meeting Friday, the 18th, here in the conference room at 10:00 AM. And there's even talk of breaking ground next week. So that's hyper, that's hyperspeed to do at least the site work and the asphalt paving before plants close down, that kind of thing.
18.
At 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
I have.
Mr. Chairman?
David.
So, the last, and again, me being me, the last conversation we had on this sand shed, we were talking about moving our sand pile into it. Personally, we've gotten along with our sand pile being outside. The cost of moving that into that shed, to me, is just a waste of money.
Are you saying?
What I'm, what I'm proposing is, once it's built, any new sand we get goes into it. But we use our sand pile outside for this winter until it's gone. Because it's, it's a lot of wasted energy, time, money, diesel fuel, moving sand from one place to another. Just my opinion.
Okay.
Makes sense.
I'd agree with you on that one.
I'm not happy with the price we're paying for that shed, and I know you're not impressed with it either.
No.
But I'd rather see $100,000 of our tax dollars be semi-wasted on that than on that sidewalk.
Much more permanent lifespan.
Well, yeah, no.
Well, I think we've already kapalched the sidewalk, so that's out the table.
Well, yeah, at this point, yeah. If we've got any other options to delineate it a little bit.
It's just too bad that that's, sand, sand shed has wound up costing us so damn much money. It just don't make sense.
In the ideal world, V-Trans would spend its money more wisely and say, here's a chunk of money, you know best how to build it, here's two or three bottom-line requirements, instead of giving us the manual. That requires us to do a lot of stuff. That's wasted.
This, this is a typical example of getting grant money and having to follow mandates that come with it.
Yep.
Oh, no. It is.
That's the boiled-down version of it.
Except even doing that, it's cheaper for us to do it the way we're doing it.
Oh, no.
We couldn't have had to build something with no help at all.
But it costs a lot of money.
But we're still, we're at.
It stills.
We're right at that point, you know? We're right at the point where, and again, I didn't vote for it just more out of principle than anything else, but we're at the point where if we were to build it ourselves, it's still going to cost us between $100,000 and $150,000.
And as, um.
And, and.
As we pointed out, it'll be more reliably consistent.
Exactly. And that, you know, we're getting a Taj Mahal that everybody can come and worship at. It's, you know.
It should last a long time.
It should last a long time. But going back to what, I think we had this discussion, it would have been nice if the state had let us do our own thing and said, hey, we'll give you 50%. That would have been a better deal for the taxpayers of the state of Vermont.
Typical example of grant money mandates.
It is, it is.
At their best.
Or worst.
It is, or worst, whichever way you want to look at it. Yes, yes.
Okay.
I don't think anybody disagrees with your joke.
Well, it's too bad. I mean, it's.
Tom Cass for dispatch services?
Yeah, we had a discussion, of course, at the last meeting about proposals for increases or for fee assessments against towns who will be using the dispatch services to be rolled out over a four-year period. And previously, I think Representative Shaw had said, hold your horses, don't get too worked up. We'll see how it plays out in Montpelier. Since that time, I've corresponded with Butch, and he says, well, yes, we should take this seriously. And we've seen in the minutes tonight how Brandon has discussed the situation. Strangely, they, I think, see the cup as half-full, that it's a valuable service, and they weren't too concerned about the cost, whereas we are much more skeptical about the whole thing naturally here. But that's just two ways of looking at the same rollout. Anyway, I've asked Butch to give us an update because he said there was more hearings to be held about whether this agency even has the authority to do what it's doing. So we'll keep you posted, basically, is the bottom line.
It's been a ongoing fight for the last six.
My question would be, do we have any alternatives, or are we hooked into it and have no choice but go?
At the moment, Joe, we have no choice to go anywhere else.
On the long run, they're going to stuff it down.
Wasn't there some discussion regionally about the Rutland Sheriff's Office?
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, I mean, I guess, my thoughts are, if, if this gets too outrageously expensive, it might be better for Pittsburgh, Brandon, you know, West Rutland, Proctor, Chittenden, and a bunch of towns to get together and have their own system. I mean, that's, obviously, we're going to have to go into this whether we want to or not, to start with, because you can't, but they're doing this CUD, Communication, Union, whatever. Why couldn't the same thing apply to 911 services for us in the, in the future?
Yeah, that's interesting.
So I, I, you know, I think there probably will be some options in the future, but I think right now, unfortunately, we're going to be stuck with this thing. You know? And it's outrageously expensive as far as I'm.
It don't look good.
$50 a call is ridiculous. But that's just my opinion.
Well, you're on the right track, I think. I'm following you.
Just, just hope the bridges are all still intact, Joe.
Enhanced Energy Plan?
Yes, Mark Winslow, who made a nice presentation of the Planning Commission's proposed Enhanced Energy Plan, has followed up with a call. Just wondering if the board intended to take any particular action. Of course, it didn't at the time that he made the presentation, but now everybody's had, I guess, a little time to reflect on it. And I guess he'd be interested to know if you're interested in accepting it or approving it, taking some affirmative step to say that you appreciate it and that you accept it. I think that's what he's looking for. Not, again, that it's legally binding, because as he points out, these are non-binding recommendations.
So now, does that require us, because it's non-binding, can, can we just approve it, or do we have to have hearings on it?
No, I think that's the case. I had some interaction with Regional Planning, and they said because it's non-binding, it didn't look like there's any requirement for that kind of thing.
Okay.
This isn't something where the Regional Planning Commission can tell us what we can or can't do.
Well, if we wanted to have something legally binding, and of course, if you wanted to get credit from them for doing it exactly their way, you'd have to take the 14 steps that they proposed, which I think the board had no interest in following.
Yeah. Want to get their approval and the other, wanting to get their approval, yeah. Like John said, there's 14 different things you've got to comply with. There's probably actually more than that now. But anyway, and then we would have to open up our town plan. And we had issues getting our town plan passed, so I, we've pretty much.
We don't want to give them a second bite at the door.
Exactly. We've got another, what, at least five more years on this plan, I'm guessing. So we need to just.
I don't know if anybody will agree with me or not, but I think local control and input is shrinking all the time. And this might be one of those cases.
It is, but, you know, at least we're keeping it in-house, so.
And then this time, the commission did kind of a modest set of recommendations, non-binding, without the need to jump through regional or state hoops.
So what are you looking for, Dave?
Motion and a second.
We'll make a motion and accept it. That's not a budget.
I'll, I'll second that.
For a discussion? Hold if they ever say aye.
Aye.
Hold if those say no. And so carry.
Very good. Thank you. I'll let Mark Winslow know.
Update on the local hazard mitigation plan?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. It's time for the town to comply with the requirement to update its hazard mitigation plan every five years. You will recall that we applied for and received a grant allowing us to hire the Regional Planning Commission to facilitate and kind of run the, run the business of updating the plan with the cooperation of a local committee. The local committee has been created, consisting of myself, the town clerk, the highway foreman. The local committee has been created, consisting of myself, the town clerk, the highway foreman, the emergency management director, selectmen hooker, and Kevin Blow from the planning commission. We've met several times, and we will meet again this coming Wednesday. The plan is then to present a draft to the select board for an upcoming meeting, probably October 7th, at which we will also invite members of the planning commission to attend and provide any input they have as well. So you will likely see this matter back on the agenda for the next meeting, and at that time, we'll basically have a chance to see the draft, comment on it, and then ultimately give it some approval after a subsequent meeting on the 21st, I think.
Do you want to just go to the base path right now?
Uh, yes, we can do that, or we can go ahead and talk about the error and omission and the homestead penalty, and then we can make the call to our friend at the regional planning commission, if you'd like.
All right, let's do that.
Good. We do have an assessor error and omission, which relates to two parcels in town, and just to summarize, they are parcels 1899 and 1900, um, parcels of land on Lee Road slash Gordon Hills, and are lots four and five, and lot two of the General Land Company's five-lot subdivision owned by James Grace. General Land Company grieved their assessment this year due to an error in the acreage and an error of a pavilion no longer on General Land Company's lots, but now on parcel 1900. Also, an updated survey filed with the town in 2017 had never been recorded on our tax maps, so corrections were made to this, including creating a new parcel for General Land Company as the sale of these lots made the remaining lots, one and three, no longer contiguous. She, given my short staffing, this is Lisa Wright writing, at the time and the busy period of Lister's grievances, I did not have time to make these E and O requests earlier, but I feel it's important to do them for the 2020 and to update our maps accordingly and have the 2020 grand list aligned with that. So the following are specific changes to these parcels that they're proposing. One, as to parcel 1899, owned by Marzalak, address Lee Road and Gordon Hills, currently on our grand list as Sangamon Road. The property description is lot four of a 37.1 acres and lot five of 38.6 acres. The grand list value in 2020 was $162,400, and they're proposing an increase in value to $256,300. There was a sale price of $351,900, which is not the basis of this correction, but it's interesting information to have. So maybe we want to deal with that parcel first? Or if you want to hear the second parcel, I'll do that, you can do it all together?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Parcel 1900, just a brief description again, the owner's name is Heald, again, on Lee Road and Gordon Hills, again, maybe on Sangamon Road South, according to the grand list. It's lot, lot three of 41.5 acres. The 2020 grand list value was $112,800, and the proposed change to the general list value would increase it to $180,400. Again, there was a sale price of $242,900, again, as background information to support partially the change, the increase.
Now, this is Grace, Grace, Grace's land that's on the, off the Sangamon Road, it ain't coming in from the other end of Blueberry Hill.
No, that's... Would like to make a comment on this, I don't know if this is, before we get done anyway, going along with Joe says, as far as, and this may be something we want to bring up to our planning commission, this is not the only chunk of property in Pittsburgh that can only be accessed by going through another town as far as fire and police, and I think maybe our planning commission, when they do subdivisions, need to have something in the rules to allow them, before we allow these subdivisions, that somehow we have some kind of a mutual agreement with the town that we have to go through to take care of, policing, fire, and, and now our rest, now that we own our rescue squad, rescue squad also, because they're going to have to go clear into Rutland Town and then back in.
I think I remember about 10 years ago, being approached by Rutland Town about something going on in that general area of Blueberry Hill.
I agree, John, I remember.
And wanting the town to commit to putting up some money.
Right, and we said no.
And we said no.
Well, there's...
But this is, this is no doubt a different situation.
One time.
Okay.
If this is on the south side, south side of the Sangamon Road, it can't be too far to where Grace owns land that borders Rutland Town Line.
Yep, it does say Sangamon Road is south.
But there's no access from Sangamon. As far as what I, at least what I've been told is, from, from a couple different people, there's no access from Sangamon, so our emergency services have got to go clear down to...
Up by George Lavax Barn.
Up by George Lavax Barn and around, yeah.
Through George Lavax is through a chunk of land that we own, they have the right way through it.
Okay.
And then on, kind of bare east, and go up onto the higher ground.
It's up on the hill, yeah.
Which is the lot.
Yeah.
Now, how does that, I don't think he owns clear through to the Sangamon Road, I think Dr. McGary owns in between, or the old McGary place, unless they purchased that, but I'm not aware of it.
Well, yeah, I don't know, but I know from what I've been told by three different people at this point, there is no, there may be a horse path or something like that, but there is no access from Sangamon Road in Pittsburgh into this property.
Well, I, I didn't think there was, but I'm not sure whether we're talking about the exact same spot, but in the event that children have to go to school, they're in the town of Pittsburgh, that was that one, some school bus.
What's going to happen there? Well, no, that's, this is why, I mean, there's nothing we can do about this one, there's also another chunk that everybody's aware of that's this same way, I don't know how many others there's the potential for, but all I'm bringing up is maybe the select board should tell the planning commission, you need to figure out a way to protect us on this.
As far as the fire protection, Pittsburgh and Rutland work together, and Rutland is within a stone's throw of it.
Right.
We have mutual aid.
But Pittsburgh is miles away.
It's our responsibility.
Yeah, and when it comes to road maintenance, I don't know whether there's any chance that the town will wind up having to take over that.
Well, I asked on that, from what I understand, it's a private road, so if it stays that way, that's, well, we would have to probably, we would have to turn it into a town road, and I don't think we'll probably do that.
I don't think we would, probably.
I don't think we would, so, you know, the highway part, because, again, well, it's, Mark Winslow is one of the people, and I had him come in here and talk with Jeff, because I brought it up to him, and, you know, because the road was another concern, and he said, no, it's going to be, according to Jeff, by Susie, it's going to be a private road. So road maintenance is an issue, but now that the rescue squad is part of our town, you know, our fire department, our police department, they're going to have to go into another town to come back in, and, as far as I'm concerned, for somebody to do that subdivision in the future, granted, there's nothing we can do about this, when you do that subdivision, they need to come up with some kind of an agreement with the town you've got to go through, that they will handle those things, or the subdivision doesn't go through.
Yep.
That's my opinion.
Rutland Town, I think, give them some contest ongoing, while extending Rutland's, the town road goes up further to Lavax.
Right.
And then from Lavax to the town line is, God, it's got to be three, four hundred yards up across there. And Rutland Town didn't want any part of that road, and I don't think they have any part of that road, right the way it stands.
I believe it's all private, yeah.
It's all private.
Yeah.
But you get, you get a half a dozen houses back up in there, and that might put pressure to make some other changes, and wouldn't be very favorable, especially when it comes to school.
Well, so again, that's where my opinion is, this board needs to instruct the planning commission to, to deal with this, because this isn't the first time.
And it'll continue.
It will continue, and, yeah, I don't know how many other spots we have like this, but we very well could have some more, and...
Would the board like me to put a friendly bug in the ear of the planning commission about this topic?
Thank you, sir.
Be happy to?
Well, they should be aware of it, I don't know, maybe they are.
Well, they're aware of it, but I think the select board politely insisting that they do something wouldn't get it, I mean, it'll take them months to do it anyway, because planning commissions move pretty slow, but, I mean, even our group, I mean, it just does, it's the nature of the beast.
Perhaps this board should make a recommendation to the planning commission that they consult us at least, or something.
Well, that's, well, it'll have to, when, whatever they come up with zoning changes, they've got to come through us anyway, so.
If you, we all need to cooperate, make it as easy as we can, but we got to make it right to, well, we got to protect the town.
Oh, yeah.
That's the bottom line.
Not necessarily easy.
No, but...
I got you. Then that leaves the issue of these two errors and omissions, which we've already discussed and which I will send to Kelly, just so she has accurate minutes.
I'm just sending an email to do it.
I know how she thinks now, more and more, and so what's your pleasure?
I would make a motion that we allow Lisa to make these changes.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Hold if they ever say aye.
Aye.
Hold if they say no.
Fantastic, thank you.
Now, John, we have the homestead abatement before we call?
Yes, um, Carl and Jean Ojala have been in touch with Helen, and they put their request into writing in tonight's packet. It is, according to Helen, the first time they've ever sought relief from a homestead declaration late filing penalty. In the past, I think the board has said, would be for one time, for each person who asks for it, we would allow it, but that's completely up to you if you want to continue with that approach. They've explained that their accountant kind of dropped the ball, and they'd appreciate the town waiving the penalty, and the state does allow you to do that, if you'd like.
They'll be able to do it very well, and they're not the kind of people that are going to miss us the next time. Live on the corner on the...
So we have allowed this?
Yes, I think it's just been like a one-shot-at-the-apple kind of approach that the board has taken.
I hate to set a new precedent.
We've always done this before.
Yeah, we've done it. I guess, but I guess, eh, yeah, and I'm not saying I'm against giving them the break, but it was not, if it was our error, if somehow we had printed something out wrong or whatever, then I would say absolutely, but the fact that their accountant made the error gives me a little pause in, that's not, that's not our fault, you didn't have an accountant who could do the job right, just, you know, but I, again, I'm, if the, if the normal thing that we do is a one-time abatement or a one-time, whatever it is we're doing...
How much money are you talking to?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars, yeah. I'll make a motion, we're baiting.
I'll second it. Further discussion? Hold if they ever say aye.
Aye.
Hold if they say no.
We'll argue about it all later, if we don't.
Well, no, it's, I just want to make the point, it's not, it wasn't our fault.
I, I agree, and probably the accountant should pay the money back.
Well, that, I would agree with that, yeah, yeah.
You know, but we've done it before, so.
Okay, well, no, and that's why I voted for it, if it's something new, it would have fucked, say no.
Otherwise, I wouldn't even make the motion.
Yeah.
But we've done it before, and, yeah. If it was a thousand dollars, it'd be something different.
Well, that's, yeah.
I hate to provide an easy way for somebody to make a mistake and get away with it.
Yeah, that's why, the accountant should be the guy writing them a check for a hundred dollars.
Give them a hundred dollars, they'd be either...
No.
Hey, Devin, it's John Haverstock, how are you?
Hey, are you still working?
We're still, yeah, we're still working, um, we had tried to get in with you earlier, but you hadn't quite called into our meeting, and rather than listen to Don Ho music for the next hour and a half, we decided to hang up and call you specifically, so I'm going to put you on speaker, okay?
Yes, let me do it.
Oh, sure. He's got to run upstairs to a quiet room. Children screaming in the basement. All right, so you're, are you getting up there? Okay, I'm putting you on speaker now.
My dog.
Can you hear us, Devin?
I can.
Thank you, and if you would...
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, if you'd speak up, we have a primitive system here.
Okay, I'll do my best.
So the board has your memo in which you describe the way the three towns have at least preliminarily talked about the possibility of a bike ped path between West Rutland, Proctor, and Pittsburgh, and possibly even Rutland Town, and I think your idea is that this would bring, you know, some tourism and perhaps some economic development, and just give some more credentials for tourism for these towns to, to advertise. What else can you tell us about this project and the grant funding that might go with it?
Absolutely, um, so, you know, uh, just as I said in the memo, a little background, you know, we had, we had discussed this project, it met over the winter, um, and there seems to be some good support, and there seems to also be, you know, interest among the three towns, possibly four, about, you know, looking at kind of these alternative ways to, you know, bridge the gap between the local economy, tourism, and transportation, and it seems like a no-brainer that, you know, there already are some known routes with some bicyclists, um, currently between the three towns, um, and that this might be a good opportunity to at least determine the feasibility of a potential tri-tem bike loop or path, or any variation thereof, um, so, these are kind of becoming more popular throughout the state, you know, I had mentioned one in the letter, um, one, the one I mentioned is in Addison County, which got funded actually through their regional planning commission, um, instead of the bike ped grant, because they, they offer their own version of that, um, but they seem to really have success using the kind of, um, the hybrid version, which would utilize some shared use paths and some on-road paths as well, um, which would be certainly the most, uh, you know, cost-effective approach to implementing something like this, but the, you know, the scale is so big, and there's so many factors with these type of projects, that, you know, we really like to scope them before, you know, putting any money towards them of, of significance, um, and not only that, it typically when we scope these projects, it unlocks other funding, uh, because it shows that we've gone through the planning process and we've done our due diligence, um, so, you know, potential funding going down the road, if we fund this study and it, it proves to be feasible, um, and it proves to be a collaborative effort between the three towns, you know, we could look at certainly additional, um, bike ped funding through the state that would fund and design construction, but we could also look at, um, USDA rural development grants, which are now available for our region, um, in the Rutland area, when initially they, they weren't available this far south, so that's a huge amount of funding with a pretty, um, small match considering what's available there, so, you know, it's, there's potential that, you know, we, we could actually fund this, um, from the scoping study. We definitely don't want to, you know, just have another study sitting on a, on a shelf somewhere, that's certainly not the goal, um, but it really is, it, there's nothing like this in Rutland region, you know, we have a ton, a ton of trail networks, and we know there's a lot of interest and a lot of tourism around our trail networks, but there's not the same bicycle infrastructure, um, within our on-road network, and that's really what's more, um, accessible to not only our local residents, but our tourists as well, so, you know, I could really see this be a part of a large, larger project, you know, the state is considering, you know, statewide bike, bikeways instead of the scenic car vehicle ways, they're trying to think of how to do them with bikes, so, um, yeah, certainly, it's exciting in terms of the opportunity, I think there's a lot of opportunity to kind of bridge those gaps, um, do you guys have any specific questions or concerns about a project like this?
I'll, I'll jump in with just a first one.
I, I, I do think the, the fact that it is collaborative is really encouraging, and I think certainly the state and, you know, the RBC generally really likes to see that collaboration, because, you know, we're all kind of in this, and we have similar problems. collaboration, because, you know, we're all kind of in this, and we have similar problems and similar opportunities.
Devin, just to start off, you, you like the idea because, you know, this area is a relatively flat and easily bikable area. We have lots of people who make use of West Creek Road, for example, and I know Whipple Hollow is another candidate, and there's also some back roads that could be looped in with maybe...
Right.
Destination points like the Rutland Park, for example, as one maybe destination point.
Yep.
Is that what you have in mind? And am I right that a local match on a grant like this would amount to, for three towns, $2,000 per town?
That is correct, yep. So we're looking, this, a scoping study of this size is typically around $30,000, so that'd be, you know, a $5,000 to $6,000 match. And I think, you know, certainly, Vtrans, over the last three years, has not denied a scoping study request, which is really encouraging, but, you know, I, I think even if there were incredible competition, I think this would be a shoo-in project just because of, you know, that collaborative effort.
I guess, so, are you talking of just using existing roads, or are you talking of actually putting a bike lane along existing roads? Or are you using old rail beds? I mean, what, what exactly are we talking about here? Because I live on West Creek Road, and it's really, yes, there's a lot of people bike there, but it's not really a bike-friendly road.
Right.
And, and so while I am truly in favor of bike lanes and those kinds of things, I'm just concerned if you're not planning on actually putting a dedicated bike lane, I have some concerns.
Safety concerns.
Hey, this thing sounds like mills over there, is that right?
That's right.
Yep, it is.
I was going to talk you, um, so, yeah, those are absolutely genuine concerns, and, you know, I want to leave every option on the table for the consultant to look at. So, you know, ideally, I think it would be a hybrid of roads, off-road, multi-use paths, potentially dedicated bike lanes. However, you know, that's really, that's why we're bringing in the experts with a consulting firm to look at this, and, you know, this is what they do, they, this is by no means something new, and especially in rural communities like ours, that, you know, some roads might look great, they're low volume, but the cars that are on there are dangerous. So, you know, I want to look at, I would like this scoping study to look at all the options, and maybe, you know, there's alternatives. Certainly with these scope studies, they have to, by, you know, by the RMP produce certain alternatives. So one might be a full-horned road option, one might be a hybrid, one might be a complete multi-use path. So I think you're right, I think the, we don't want to implement any project that puts people in jeopardy, especially, you know, we're trying to encourage bicycle use, not, not prohibit it or make it more scary. So absolutely, I think those have to be clearly communicated in the proposal, but I don't think they're deal breakers.
And do you agree that if we, if the board were to go forward and approve this idea, that we're not obliging ourselves to any particular plan that might come out of this
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, two things, one...
If we don't like, if we don't like the study, if they don't...
There's no saying you have to do it. I mean, you should, because that, it doesn't look great to get awarded something and then deny it, but let's say we did this feasibility study, and none of the options are great. You know, I would rather know that and eliminate as, as a possibility that not know it, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And have it fully vetted by a consultant. You know, I don't think we're going to get that answer where it's like, oh, there's no possible options here. But, yeah, there's nothing saying, you know, we do this study, that you have to do anything. I mean, ideally, we would, because that's what we want, is some sort of, you know, tangible, you know, thing to come out of this, but, yeah. So there is some security in that, in, in making the ultimate decision lines with the
Okay, so essentially, all, you're asking for around $2,000 chipped in from the town of Pittsburgh to do the study with no obligation in the end for us to accept the results, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
That's 100% right.
Okay.
And it really, you know, at the end of this process, I think this would be a wonderful opportunity to, to have an excuse for the three, four towns to collaborate and talk. So, you know, maybe it opens up dialogue for a project, or, you know, there's, there's more opportunity down the road. So I think no matter what, it's a, it's going to be a good result, so, yeah.
We love most, if not all, of our neighboring towns, Devin.
Yep. We like them all.
Question that...
Yeah, they're okay, right? They're still doing, they're not going to move at, at least anytime soon, right? So...
The question that, is Joe, on your, the question comes to my mind, has anybody taken a map and a pencil and drawn any lines that they could show us?
Yeah, so, you know, that was kind of the first exercise we did over the winter, and there were a bunch, you know, we printed out a big map. It mostly looked at the on-road options, but we were also looking at old railroad beds that pass through Proctor. So it, you know, really, it, it comes down to what, what do you want to connect to, you know, and how direct do you want to make that? So, you know, it seemed to us, just, you know, spending a few minutes looking at the map, that there were quite a few alternative options to each road that we looked at. So, you know, if we didn't want to do West Creek Road, there was another one, you know what I mean? And certainly, if there's anything we do along Route Three, you know, we're going to have to really work Vtrans on that, and, you know, I think we, we'd find that there would be some good support there as well.
I don't know, the amount of truck traffic on Route Three could be a problem.
No, but when I was back on the planning commission, and I was one of the few people that brought this up, but Route Three, especially at that time, they didn't even have a storm.
Right.
And it was like, you know, it's fairly level between Proctor and Pittsburgh along that route, and it would have been, well, when they just did the resurfacing or whatever, would have been an ideal time to have added a path on one side for walking and bicycles, you know, and connect the two towns together that way, and I think actually, a lot of people would use that.
Yeah, no, I think you're right, and I, I think that's kind of some of the appeal to this particular route, is that it is so flat between these towns, that it makes me feel like it's a lot more accessible than, you know, somebody trying to bike up Quarterline Road, or, you know, some of these crazy hills that are all around. So, yeah, I think, you know, yeah, that might have been a missed opportunity, maybe it wasn't with Vtrans, you know, we'll never know. But, you know, if we have this study now, any of that future state work, we can look to try to harmonize with any of those potential reconstruction projects. And who knows, you know, it, there could be some sort of surplus stimulus money coming down the pipe, I'm not planning on it, but, you know, keep hearing about it. And it'd be good to have a plan in place if there were any, any sort of, you know, influx of money.
With an election coming, it's tempting for Congress to crank out some money. Who knows?
Yeah.
What are you looking for, Hank?
You guys want to do it or not? It's too bad somebody couldn't bring a map and come and show us where they've got some lines.
But I don't think, I, I don't think we're at that point, I mean, I think we're, you know, yeah, they're saying, yeah, maybe we can do this and whatever, but they need the consultant, they need the study.
They need some money to go forward.
Well, they need the study to draw the lines, yeah, so...
I'll make a motion.
The $2,000, the $2,000?
They say up to $2,000.
Probably, so maybe less, might be less. Well, if you do four towns, that's probably less.
Yeah, $1,500.
I'll second that, I think, I mean, if, if, well, if, for no other reason, if they can get paths to get bicycles off the road for safety concerns, I think it's worth at least looking into.
Absolutely. I like it.
Yeah.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the opposed say no? Your name is like Gary.
Congratulations, Devin, nice work.
Well, thank you all, and I'm looking forward to working with the count on next one.
Good.
See you, Ava.
Have a good night.
All right, have a good night, thanks, guys.
Bye-bye.
I think that concludes our open meeting, part of the meeting, meeting.
It does, it does.
I think it's ready to come in.